Testing.
You may recall when we talked last week that we indicated that that was paused for the current school year. However, we're assuming regular participation occurs starting with the next fiscal year. And in the event that the revenues don't materialize, as we have foreseen, you may recall in the last month in the board meeting, the board did approve a buyout of the district's cell tower leases. And that provided about $2.3 million of revenue that is available in our enterprise fund. So if we're not able to make that full transfer, we do have a fallback in order to draw some, to bring that up to the $2.5 million. So whether it comes from our extended learning group or potentially from our enterprise funds, we have funds available to make that transfer. Moving to the next slide, please. We've also adjusted our expenditures by $5.4 million. That includes the recommendation to forego about $15.1 million in strategic priorities that Deanna reviewed with you just a moment ago. We're also not moving forward with about $11 million in departmental position requests that had come through. At this time, those are all on pause. And I indicated earlier that we're reviewing our O and M expenditures, and we expect that those adjustments will reflect about $11.4 million in adjustments that would possibly be transferred to compensation to ensure that we're able to move forward with the recommendations that were shared with the board. And finally, between the plan to go with the AV block schedule as a pilot as opposed to full implementation and adhering to our pre-pandemic staffing guidelines, there was about $16.7 million in positions that we were able to adjust. And so the additional teachers needed for AV block and the five of seven periods that Deanna just shared with you, that would actually be funded from the post-pandemic plan rather than within our base budget because it is specifically addressing the COVID slide that we anticipate that we'll see going into next year. So the net total of our adjustments, if you can click next on the slide presentation, please. With the revenue adjustments, we have seen a net adjustment that positively impacts the budget of about $81.9 million or right at $82 million. And so if you can go to the next slide, please. Looking at our assumptions, we have shared most of this information with you, but to recap quickly, we're using the moderate enrollment growth from PASA, the demographic information that was shared with you back in March with a 96.5% ADA rate. And we're also factoring in a 3.8% increase in weighted average daily attendance. We have our sped population estimated at 11.9% of total enrollment, and about 45% of our students are estimated to qualify for free or reduced lunch, which impacts our compensatory ed funding. And then as we shared, our property value growth from the Fort Bend Central Appraisal District is estimated at 4%. And it is important to point out that the district does not control this growth. That assessment is done by the Central Appraisal District. They arrive at the valuation that's actually used to determine how our tax rate will actually be calculated, but they don't determine the tax rate, they just calculate the actual appraisal of properties. And again, I do want to reiterate, we have met with the chief appraiser on more than one occasion throughout the process, and he continues to reassure us that he's anticipating 4% growth. What I would say professionally is that we know that their estimates tend to be conservative because they don't want to overpromise. And so that I would expect that that 4% would be right at the 4% or perhaps slightly higher based on the conversations that we've had with the Central Appraisal District over the last several months. And then finally, we have built into, in three of the strategic investments that Deanna mentioned into our base scenarios. That includes the Early Literacy Center at Hunter's Glen for $1.8 million, the Early College High School and P-Tech Year Three Cohorts for $2 million, and then the recommended compensation adjustment, which was about 6% for teachers on average, and a 4% increase for non-teaching staff. And the total cost of that was $32.2 million. Next slide, please. And we've previously shared, I'm going to talk through the 2021 school year first, that we anticipated ending the year with a 91-day fund balance reserve based on the projections that I've just outlined, including the compensation and those two items that were funded from strategic priorities, including the Early College High School as well as the ELC. That results in a balanced budget. We would have a 91-day fund balance reserved based on the anticipated revenues and expenditures made on that. So as I say that I'm, there's a clear delineation being drawn now. So as we look at our core businesses, if we were operating the district on an ongoing basis, as we would in a normal year, our budget is balanced. However, we recognize that we're going to have additional expenditures above and beyond what those normally are. And we've segmented those out so the board can clearly see how we're recommending to fund those options going forward. So I'm pausing here just in part to show that the budget, as we would normally file it in a normal year, would be balanced. The issue is now we have to address the COVID items. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So I indicated that we have, or as, what I would say in closing this out is the outcome of our base budget and compensation budget is there are no new programs that are being launched or funded in the budget. We're maintaining a foundational budget that is for normal operations. And we're also ensuring that we have a competitive compensation package to attract and retain employees. And then again, as I just mentioned, we're shifting those COVID-related expenditures to other funding sources that will be available to us. And that leaves us in a position for the board to create priorities with new leadership when Dr. Dupree's successor is appointed. And so what we're doing is leaving a, basically a blank slate going forward, segmenting those costs that we don't expect will be ongoing into a separate bucket. And I'll talk through those now. If you can go two slides forward, please. So we've identified four primary areas of funding for the pandemic-related items. I indicated that we're using 4% property value growth. And the chief appraiser, again, he tends to be conservative in his estimates. So any additional property value growth above 4% could be shifted to fund some of these priorities. The question may come up about, well, what about compression? And the answer is yes, there will be compression if value comes in above 2.5%. However, the state senate budget and the state house budget both fully fund House Bill 3 in its current iteration. And what that means is that the compression mechanism is funded, so the district will receive those funds back, even though we're not making them up locally. I do caveat that always by saying, so long as the state can fund compression, we're in a good place. But if there's ever a case where they cannot, then we would be in a world of pain. But at this point, both bills that have been, are both budgets that have filed, been filed by both the House and Senate, fully fund House Bill 3 and Senate Bill 2, meaning that we would have, the effects of compression are fully funded. Second, we've indicated that there are millions of dollars in COVID relief funds. And though we don't have specific clarity on how or when they're going to be allocated, we know that we will be receiving the funding. And the way that it's been explained through our various associations and organizations is the district received roughly $9 million for SRR1. SRR2, which was passed back in December of 2020 and signed by President Trump, is about eight times the size of that. And so we've seen the initial district calculations, and that represents about $32 million for Fort Bend ISD. SRR3, which was assigned into law by President Biden, is about 10 times the size of SRR2. And so if you do the math on about $32 million, you arrive at a gigantic number. And here's what I would say. The state may choose to do some supplanting, meaning that they offset what their cost is by providing, by reducing their amount. But there is not a way for them to completely offset all of that. There will be money left over when they finish, no matter what they do. And we expect that that money will flow to the district and be available to fund these items. And so our second tier of funding, if property value doesn't grow, which we know it won't grow to the extent it's going to fund everything that we have, but we would expect COVID relief funds would fund a great portion of that. Our next component of what I would call a, it would be our option of last resort, would be the utilization of disaster pennies. And this doesn't require any legislative action to enact, but it does provide an avenue for us to fund expenditures that may not be available locally. And so we've shared with you what that would look like. And again, this is our recommendation of last resort. The final item that's on the list would be voter-approved tax rate election. And what I would say about this is, if the legislature were to choose to act to change the definition of disaster, and there are currently two bills out there, Senate Bill 1438 and House Bill 3376, that will change the definition of disaster. If those were enacted, the option that we would have would be a VATRE. And so that's not something that we would, again, go to first. It would be our action of last resort if no federal funding comes in to provide that. We don't know when we'll have clarity on the federal funding, but I expect we will have it before September, which isn't when the board will actually vote to enact the tax rate. And so we still have several months in front of us before we actually have to vote on the tax rate. So that provides us time to have the clarity. So even if the legislature makes last-minute decisions, we should still have clarity on what the impact will be to Fort Bend ISD and how it will impact our tax rate. And so I want to be clear on that, that although we are saying we're going to rely on federal funds, it is a, it's our first stop. But we do have alternatives if those don't come into play in a timely manner. And that would be to resort to, again, disaster pennies, or worst-case scenario, a TRE. Next slide, please. So the post-pandemic response items that we've identified include the teacher planning and PLC time that Deanna walked through, virtual learning, student interventions, and contact tracing. And the total cost for those initiatives is just over $15 million. And if we're required to use disaster pennies, the calculation that we've come up with is it would require about three cents on the tax rate. And so what I would say is that the number of pennies needed can be reduced if we see growth above the 4%. And again, it's a, it could fluctuate down slightly, but based on our initial calculations, based on the 4% budgetary impact that we've shared on property value growth, we're looking at roughly three cents at this point. If you can go to the next slide, please. So with those expenditures incorporated into the forecast along with the associated revenue, and again, that can come from federal funds, additional AV growth, or worst-case scenario, having to go the route of a disaster penny or VATRE, we are meeting our 90-day operating reserve requirement. And you'll notice that the number of days in the fund balance reserve has dropped slightly from 91 to 90, and that is a result of having to apply the 25% operating reserve to that $15 million in additional expenditure. So it increased by roughly $3.8 million. But at the end of the day, if the budget is adopted, with the anticipated revenues either coming from the federal government or a TRE, the budget will be balanced that the board adopts. Okay, I'll now transition to the debt service fund. And if you can go to slides forward, please. So we've reported previously that this is the only fund in the district that has not been impacted by COVID-19. And that continues to be the case, and we expect that going forward. We're forecasting for the income and sinking tax rate to remain flat at 29 cents. And in the 2018 bond election, we had up to a three-cent tax increase that was authorized by the voters to implement the bond. And those three pennies have been taken, so there would be no anticipated adjustments to the tax rate going forward for the 2018 bond. We fully enacted all pennies related to that. And so we currently have a debt transaction that's scheduled in June, and we'll be bringing forward a budget amendment once that transaction is finalized to incorporate the debt payment. So what I'll show you in just a moment does not include that, but we will be bringing that forward in the future. And then we also anticipate that we'll have additional debt that we issue in 2021, '22 to support the debt program. And that's based on the cash flows that's provided to us by our design and construction department based on the pace of construction that they're seeing. And then for our upcoming transaction, we anticipate that we'll be refunding about $45.5 million on the 2017 D-series, and then about $91.5 million in commercial paper. And then finally, we'll have up to $100 million in new money, depending on where we are from a construction standpoint. Next slide, please. And based on our estimates, we do anticipate that we will end 2021 better than what we budgeted. Our revenues are expected to be $130.22 million, and our expenditures at $114.44 million. And that results in an increase in fund balance of about $15.78 million. But I do want to point out that we make our debt payments in February and August. And so although the fund balance is growing substantially, in August of '21, we will make that debt service payment, which will bring us back down to a level that's more normal for what you're accustomed to seeing. And for '21, '22, we're forecasting our revenues at $135.5 million. And then that's based on the 29-cent tax rate, as I just mentioned. Our expenditures will total $134.3 million, and the fund balance would increase by about $1.2 million in our debt service fund. And again, that's in anticipation of making debt payments beginning in August of each year. And so now that we've talked through both the general fund and debt service fund, we can share the impact of the proposed tax rates on residential tax bills. So if you can go forward two slides, please. So again, we've talked about this with no change to the existing tax rate. And the taxes on an average residence would increase by about 3.3% if we were to go forward with the existing tax rate. So our market value is increasing by roughly 3.2%. That's the first line of values that you see on there compared to the prior year. And so it would be, the value of our average home would be about $315,400 for the upcoming tax year. After applying the eligible exemptions that a homestead may be available, the average taxable value on a home is about $285,700. So this takes into account any available exemptions. And that, again, resulting tax bill would be about $114.32 higher than what it currently is. And again, this is based on our existing tax rate. The actual impact will be determined by the final appraisal rule, the final certified rule that we receive in July. But these are our initial estimates based on information that we have available. If you can go to the next slide, please. If we were to enact the three disaster pennies, the impact to taxpayers would be about a $200 increase in the tax bill. And using the same scenarios that I just described, that $200 is about a 5.8% increase over the current year tax bill. And if you can go to the next slide. And then comparing the two of those of no change to the tax rate versus enacting the disaster penny, there's about an $86 difference between those two on an annualized basis, or about $7.14 per month. So in all, in total, if we were to go with no change to the tax rate and enact our base budget, a taxpayer would see that increase of about $112 or $114. Again, with the additional disaster pennies, that increases to about $200. And then again, that would be either three disaster pennies or three cents from a VATRE to support those pandemic transition plans that we've discussed. And if we transition now to our child nutrition fund, if you can go to the next slide. As we've shared previously, we are having challenges in the child nutrition fund, and this is all pandemic-driven. The fund has run at a deficit throughout this, the year, with more than half of the students engaged in online learning. Obviously, participation has been much slower than what we've seen in the past. We'll be maintaining the 26 community eligibility provision campuses, and that means that all students at those campuses will continue to eat at no cost, regardless of their economic status. And we're anticipating that we may need to do an increase to paid lunch costs. And we have not had an increase in paid lunch costs since 2011. And what I would say is that we would take any, or any adjustment would occur based on USDA guidance. And so the 2122 tool that's used to calculate lunch costs has not yet been released. And we've done that based on the 2021 guidance, and that was what was showing that it could be up to 50 cents. But before any action was, would be taken, we would be utilizing a tool that's released for the upcoming school year, not the prior one. And so based on how things have shaken out, that may be very different. And according to Matt Antignola, our Director of Child Nutrition, typically at this point, that guidance has already been released. So we suspect they may be making revisions based on the current operating situation that most school districts find themselves in. And then what I would close with is that this fund does incorporate the 4% general increase for compensation that we discussed in the general fund. We also have some calendar adjustments that will be incorporated based on a comparison to some local, or to our local peer districts. We did a survey around the area and found that some staff in the child nutrition department are working quite a few more days than other area districts, and will be working to make those adjustments to ensure that we're more in alignment with other districts in the area. Next slide, please. So our revenue for 2021 is expected to be down significantly from the adopted budget. And again, this is directly attributed to the lower number of students participating because they're engaged in virtual learning. Our expenditures are also considerably less. And again, that's also driven by participation. And based on our year-end projection, we're expecting a $1.9 million loss in the fund. A portion of that loss will be covered by the general fund. And when we review that information with you, that is incorporated in there. And then we are also expecting to receive $1.4 million from the Texas Department of Agriculture that is specifically for lost revenue in the child nutrition funds. And so that's also incorporated into this. Moving into next year, however, we are expecting participation to normalize once again. And we've incorporated the compensation adjustments into the fund. So next year, we are expecting to break even based on a return to normalcy. But what I would say is, again, if the fund does run at a deficit, that is not allowed by USDA, and so any loss would be covered by the general fund. But because we're budgeting the general fund based on normal operations with a supplement for the COVID, we're following a similar practice here in the child nutrition fund. for the COVID, we're following a similar practice here in the child nutrition fund, so that the methodology is consistent. So before wrapping up, I do want to share the status of our federal funds, and those are typically all determined by state, our federal statute on what we are eligible to receive, and there is a requires TEA application that has to be submitted to receive those funds. TEA is the managing agency, although it's, the funds are actually allocated by the U.S. Department of Education. So all the funds from TEA are allocated to the district on a formula basis, and typically we receive notification of when those funds will be received in May or early June. And those funds include Title I, II, III, and IV, IDEA B, as well as the Perkins Grant. And because the funds are formula-based, as well as the notification of the award occurring after the district's fiscal year process is completed, those funds are not reviewed by the Board of Trustees, and they're not required to be approved by the Board of Trustees. So I want to emphasize, although you haven't seen those funds, they are accounted for, but it's done based on the federal budget cycle, not on the district's fiscal year. Next slide, please. So there are a couple of next steps that we have. For our next steps related specifically this evening, we do have three items for board consideration. There's an item calling for the date for the budget public hearing, and this is statutorily required to be held prior to the, the Board of Trustees voting on the budget, and it also has to be published in time for the public to be aware that the public hearing is being held. So that's part of the reason we're bringing that forward this evening. Also for consideration are votes on the tax rate, and I do want to emphasize, you are not actually voting to set the tax rate tonight. What the vote tonight will do will be establish the tax rate amounts on which the public hearing can be held. And so once we have set that amount, the board cannot enact a tax rate higher than the amounts that we publish unless we go through a rep publication process to notify the public. And so the tax rate that you are seeing tonight, you're voting to hold the public hearing on those amounts and set the maximum tax rate that you can adopt for the upcoming school year. And so that total is a dollar twenty-seven-oh-two, and that's based on a O and M rate of ninety-eight-point-zero-two cents and an O and M rate, or an INS rate to support the debt service fund of twenty-nine cents. And so again, this is going back to the two scenarios I shared in the tax rate analysis. Either a dollar twenty-seven-oh-two is what the tax rate we would be recommending as a maximum adoptable rate. So again, this is, you're not voting to adopt the tax rate this evening, you're voting to set the rate at which you're going to hold a public hearing on. And again, we can go, we can go below that rate, we cannot go above that rate once it's been published for the public hearing purposes. So those three items will be considered this evening, and then moving into May, we'll have consideration of the budget, which would be a public hearing held on May the tenth for the board, and then for the board to consider action that evening. And then in June, we'll do the final amendment on our current-year budget and bring forward the fund budget, balance resolution. And as I indicated in the prior meeting, although we're not recommending a VATRE, it's our action of last resort, there are actions that have to occur for the board to take action on doing a VATRE. And one of those actions, of course, is holding an efficiency audit, and we are moving forward with that and anticipate that that work will be completed in June. So if we have to go forward with a VATRE, we are positioned so that the board can take the most appropriate course of action. So I do want to make you aware that that work is ongoing, although we're hoping, based on the feedback we received from the state, that we will not need to utilize that option. And then I won't go through the rest of the dates here, you can see what those are, but again, we do have a very busy schedule in front of us, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this point, although I'm going to take a seat if you all do not mind.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Before we get started, I do appreciate you all coming together with this adjusted budget from the last time we had our discussion. I know we were all concerned with the major gap that we had with our balanced budget, so I do appreciate the work that it took to get us to, to this number. I do want to start the conversation with a major conversation that we had the last time, I just wanted to kind of reset and then be going to questions from the other board members. There was a, there was a great conversation last time around block scheduling that everyone weighed in on. It was around, I think, I think the initial, the initial ask was that we would implement block scheduling to all of our schools, and the initial question, I think I started off saying that it was like deja vu, that we had stopped the block scheduling back in twenty-fifteen into the twenty-sixteen school year, and then there was concerns from the other board members around the fidelity of the implementation of a full-blown block scheduling based on what we just did with COVID. So I really would like to understand, and I think the community does want to understand, kind of why do we, why do we pull back and get to a pilot state?
Well, Madam President, thank you for the question. We received a number of pieces of feedback, and as the discussion indicated, we determined that we needed to move a little more slowly so that we could ensure that we could maintain success with, with our pilot. I think the primary reasons for us to secure AB block scheduling for the three campuses that we've decided to pilot are specifically to ensure that our early college, high school, and P-Tech programs, that our students have additional opportunities because they have additional coursework that they need to take in order to earn their associate's degree. Remember that those programs are, students earn a high school diploma along with an associate's degree by the, the time that they graduate. The cohort, the initial cohort that we started with will be juniors next year, so they, their, their class load will increase. So we wanted to make sure that we could guarantee that they had additional opportunities. We also looked at data, and we know that we need to ensure that we address intervention with our students and have additional opportunities for intervention. The block scheduling at those three campuses will continue to allow us to provide maximum opportunities for interventions so that we can support students adequately. And it will also continue to move, will be able to continue to move forward with our PLC practices and ensure that teachers at those campuses have adequate time to plan. Now, as we determined that a pilot might be the best course of action to maintain those pieces, we also looked at other options that we could continue to move forward with and still maintain some of those pieces and outcomes that we were seeking. So we, with discussions with principals and with the Department of School Leadership, we landed on five of seven with specific courses at the other campuses. And specifically, we chose Algebra I, English I, English II, and Geometry along with Biology. There was a number of reasons why we looked at those particular courses. Those courses are typically courses that students need to maintain a very firm foundation in those courses, they're end-of-course courses. So with a firm foundation in Algebra I and Geometry, students have a much higher likelihood to be successful in Algebra II. English I and English II are foundational courses for students to continue to increase their ability to write at that level for English III and English IV. And obviously, biology, specifically because of the lab work that was not as consistent in the virtual environment. We felt like it was important for us to invest additional planning time in that particular subject area so that we could ensure that our students were able to meet those graduation requirements. So there was a lot of thought and creativity in, in order for us to determine, is it, can we still meet some of the outcomes that we sought to begin with, going full-blown AB block, or is it more prudent for us to, to look at a pilot with three campuses to meet the needs of those three campuses while we're able to still provide the planning time, the intervention time, and the graduation opportunities for students?
What I would add, Madam President, in addition, I think Deanna's covered it very well from the operational perspective. From the leadership perspective, the feedback we heard from the board in the last meeting expressed concern about our fidelity of implementation and fidelity of successful implementation, which we took to heart. But I think one of the most pivotal comments that we're reacting to, which I really took to heart, is we're in a season of transition. And to launch a major initiative of this magnitude during a superintendent change does place us at great risk of effective monitoring and implementation in a way that would optimize the investment and outcomes for the organization. So we determined that we do think because the three pilot schools have been, they've been on this track for over, for nearly two years, talking, planning, looking forward to that opportunity. But for the other schools, there was a lot of enthusiasm with the principals and some of the staff around it, but we, but I, we were able to see pretty clearly that the board had serious concerns about effectiveness of implementation, fidelity of implementation, and we took that to heart. And so we do think it was a better leadership decision to pull back and implement some other approaches in these non-pilot schools.
Okay, and then we're going to have a full implementation plan once you all, I think the part of the presentation was that you're going to develop your metrics, and then you'll come back to us with a full implementation plan on how we move forward in the remaining schools.
Absolutely. We're, we're working right now on developing those metrics, as I indicated, using questions and really focusing on engagement, teacher engagement, student engagement, fidelity of implementation, and student outcomes. But in addition to that, we'll be drafting operating procedures so that we can articulate what do, what are we looking for in the pilot, what does the pilot consist of, how will we monitor that progress on both tracks, the five-to-seven and the AB block? I know that the work stream that's working on the plans at this moment, they're also developing specific master schedule handbooks so that we can codify those procedures so that when we get to decision points going forward, those things are in place, and we, we've codified what we've learned in terms of operating five of seven with scheduling versus AB block. So yes, ma'am.
Okay. So at this time, I'll take questions specifically around the AB block before I open up to the general questions from any of the trustees. Does anyone have any questions? Trustee Hannah.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. First, I want to thank Ms. Sayavedra for sharing the information tonight. It was, it was helpful for me, kind of understanding the direction of you guys looking at measures and thinking about the five out of seven courses for those, those kind of EOC courses and, and English II and Geometry. I, I'm hoping that that's something that I'm, I'm sure that Ms. Heliger, maybe we could establish some kind of reporting through the year so we can, so we can see success. Because again, I want to underscore, I'm not opposed to AB scheduling, I would just like to, to see the measures and how, how that's deployed. So I also appreciate your thoughtful creativity in thinking how we can address the needs of the other campuses that aren't part of the pilot. And I would, I would, one of the questions I have, I'm, I was glad to hear you're thinking about teacher engagement as well, and then, you know, looking back at something like The Edge, how you evaluated that program, and part of that program evaluation was including reporting of the teacher staff development and, and how many teachers actually engaged in that. And I think that would probably also be very interesting to, to include in that piece. But I just, you know, I want to thank you, and for, for people listening that, that don't know how this works, because I didn't, you know, we get, we get the, the information on Friday, we read, 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 and then we ask you questions, and you guys crank out a whole lot of answers for us in the board memos, and I appreciate that work you do, because I, I know that consumes a lot of your Monday, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Ms. James? Dr. Shirley Gilliam?
Yes, again, thank you. I just piggyback right off of what Ms. Hannah said, and so I really didn't have any more questions, but when we talked about, when I heard Hightower High School, Marshall, and Willeridge, we've done this for two years now already? Did I hear that correctly? I didn't.
No, I was mentioning that since this, the idea of AB block has been on the table since they launched two years ago.
Okay.
The P-Tech and Early College High School program.
Okay, so is there any program there now? Are they doing seven?
No, they're all straight sevens right now.
Okay, all straight seven. Okay, so in, in doing that, I just hope that, I don't like to say hope. Okay. I hope we have a plan, I know we do, but the plan as far as making, as looking to see what is, what is working and what is not working from the very beginning. And so in going through, so for Hightower, Marshall, and Willeridge, again, we still have, going into the year, we have teachers, and I am totally in favor of block scheduling. I said that last time, and I want to make that totally clear, because I know that it helps students. Also, in high school, we're talking about eight credits instead of seven at the end of the year, and that's huge. And it gives time for the intervention, it does all of it, of course, and I know we're going to do it right. And I would just, to have some type of, and Ms. Hannah has already said this, as far as, how is the evaluation going when we get started? So if we're in April now, and I believe we would have already had a meeting, since we do still have the three schools, so I quit, I'm asking, is that meeting scheduled? I think the last time, if I'm correct, Ms. Williams said something about an April meeting to launch or to discuss.
Are you, are you referring to the professional development plan, Dr. Gilliam?
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that already happened, that's April?
No, if you would like some specific information on that, Ms. Williams is poised to, to respond specifically on any dates.
And I can, oh, since she's on, go ahead, Ms. Williams, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, Ms. Gilliam. Today, teachers received an overview of the professional learning structure, content, and the process for registration, which will launch, I believe, on May nineteenth. So today was their first kind of overview of how the adopted district calendar will work within the job-embedded PD, and then the timeline that they will register, and the playlist that they will have as a teacher.
And a lot of the other questions, if we could just get together like we normally do on, on, on the side too, just so that we can understand, that we don't take a whole lot of time with that. But again, then with Hightower High School, I think that, not I think, we had discussed also what went well and what didn't go well at Hightower, and I have yet to see that information. So if it's out there, meaning that we've, we stopped block scheduling before, and so now we're going back to it, but I understand there were issues, and I would like to see what the issues were and how we're addressing those issues going into all three schools doing this now.
There's not, Dr. Gilliam, there's not really a document or anything we can produce on that, but we'd be happy to, have scheduled an opportunity to talk about that in more detail, to kind of give a perspective of the how and the why, and then, of course, as Deanna mentioned, the plan going forward to monitor for fidelity.
Okay. So in, in having some type of benchmarks also just on the programs, that as we are working with the programs and working with teachers, that we are just, that this is, this is action research, so that we can consistently get better, not each year, but each and every semester, that where we see different things that we are editing and we are doing what, what is best for students each and every semester. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gilliam. Mr. Rice, you have questions on AB blocking? Okay, I'm coming back. Mr. Rosenthal, do you have questions on AB blocking?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Rosenthal.
Deanna, I wanted to see if you could help me with your, your five of seven examples, actually maybe providing an example. So let's say a student this year had biology, and you're saying that's something that you're going to focus on, so does that mean that somehow you're going to integrate biology into for next year? That's, that's, I'm trying to.
Yes, let me, let me clarify for you, Mr. Rosenthal. Yes, let me, let me clarify for you, Mr. Rosenthal, that five of seven is really teachers teaching five out of seven courses instead of six out of seven, so that they have an additional planning time, P L C planning time. The students still take seven classes, the five of seven is really for teachers, so thank you for asking that question, because that is a point of clarification.
Didn't follow that. So, so, so I know last time, we also talked about using like advisory periods or something. Is that, how does that interact with what you're discussing?
For the, right, for the five of seven, students are going to continue to choose their, their seven courses. When we, when we talked about the A B block, we talked about that eighth class considering a number of opportunities, because we've scaled that down, back to three campuses, and we, those three campuses primarily for the Early College High School and the P Tech programs, they're going to need that extra class period to meet the requirements for, for those particular programs.
Okay. Wow, I think I get that. And so, again, how are we going to address gaps for next year with, with students who missed quite a bit, who just hadn't had what they, what they were supposed to? For the non-block, get blocks though, but for the non-blocks.
Well, our course offerings will, will continue to identify students who may need additional support, and their schedules might include where they can earn local credit for intervention courses that are also recognized by the Texas Education Agency. We currently have some of those courses in place for students in our seven-period day now. We'll, we'll continue to expand what that might look like. We also discussed some summer intervention and specific intervention opportunities for students for this summer, and then I would say that we might need to couple that on the other end of the school year for the following summer. So if we've got identified students that we intervene with the summer, we've got intervention opportunities for them during the school year, and then on the back end of that school year, some additional intervention opportunities. We're also going to be making use of our O Lab, which is typically an option that we use for credit recovery. So there are a number of strategic ways that we can continue to address students to ensure that they remain on cohorts, especially at the high school level.
So of the 100 teachers, how many of those are supposed to be the A B blocks given three campuses?
So 30 of those 100 teachers are allotted for the three campuses that are engaged in A B block, and 70 would be used to support the campuses that are in a five of seven, so that teachers that teach Algebra I, English I, English II, Biology, or Geometry would have that five of seven configuration for the additional planning time.
Five of course. Right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rosenthal, can you repeat that? I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Five out of seven, then we need.
Mr. Rosenthal, we're really having a hard time hearing you. You're not, you don't have a good sound picking up on your microphone.
I can ask my, I can ask that question.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Okay, at this time, I'm going to.
Ms. Heliger? If I could, and I, I meant to say this, the five out of seven, thank you, thank you, that is an atta boy, that is a high five for those teachers that, that teach that, that it gives them that planning time, which is absolutely huge. So thank you, thank you. I, I didn't say that, and I really want, that is just absolutely wonderful. That is going to make a major difference. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think what you heard was that this board supports the, the recommendations and, and gladly repolonate so that we can ensure that we deliver it with fidelity. I think that was the main concern that we had on, on last month, and from what you all have presented tonight, it sounds like we have a good plan to ensure that we do, we do that in the future. Ms. Hannah?
Yes, there is, and the five of seven, I agree with Dr. Gilliam. I, I did have a question that I don't see in the memo that got answered, and I asked this question because I had parents call me to ask this, so I felt obligated to ask. So I know that you said you're going to have operating procedures around the A B block schedule, but I, I'm assuming that maybe E I C will need to be addressed if all of the other campuses don't follow with, with A B scheduling, so that we have a, a match statistically.
We're absolutely, we're, we're, we're running the traps on that, if you will, Ms. Hannan. Right now, we're looking at what, what specific gaps may present themselves so that we can look at if any adjustment needs to be made, what, how would we target that, and, and what would that look like?
Okay. And for parents listening, it was, the implication is that Hightower has students, or, or the early learning, or the, not early learning center, the, the, the two, the two other high schools where, where students feed in, but their GPA in the class of 2024.
Right.
Is at their home campus. Okay, thank you.
So we'll be looking at specific options that may need to be made, or any adjustments that may need to be made to E I C to maintain a level of equity.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all for that discussion and the questions and the explanation, so we do appreciate that. So now I'm going to move on to the general questions around the presentation, and I'm going to start with Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Sayavedra, how many students do we anticipate having in the virtual learning next year?
I don't have a specific number for you, Mr. Rice, at this point, but as we open the registration up, we'll, we'll gain a, a better sense of how many actual parents are interested and who qualify with the exceptions measures that we'll be publishing next week.
All right. So we'll, we'll learn that a little bit later on. Okay, and then, thank you for that. Mr. Gwynne, my question is, we've talked about this before, and I've, you've got to remind me again, if our appraise values exceed two and a half percent, we're subject to additional compression. We know it's going to be at least four percent, maybe even more than that, given the conservative nature of the county appraisal district. Did I hear you correctly in saying that House Bill Three, the legislature will make up that difference?
Yes, sir, that is correct. That the way that the compression mechanism works is that the burden essentially shifts from local taxes to the state. And so, so long as the state budget is funded in a way that compression receives the funding it needs in order to go forward, then yes, sir, that funding burden shifts to the state, and will, will be funded regardless of what our local property value growth is.
And so I just want to reiterate that our normal budget without COVID is fully funded.
Yes, sir. Based on the, the work that we have done, we have fully funded what we would call our base operational budget, and it does meet our 90-day fund balance policy requirement.
And that includes the raises for the teachers?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So our additional funding for the post-pandemic response and the interventions include the additional property value growth, which you have not factored that in yet?
Yes, sir, that is correct. So we have a number of funding options for that additional work that needs to be done post-pandemic. The first one is any property value growth that comes in over four percent can be directed and allocated towards those funding needs. The second option would be the federal funding that would potentially be coming in, and then, of course, the option of last resort, as I mentioned, would be we could potentially use disaster pennies to fund those items. And in total, we're looking for about $15 million in revenues and expenditures associated with that post-pandemic response.
And S R one, we've got $9 million coming to us roughly.
S R one, we have actually received that funding.
Oh, we've already.
Yes, sir, and that was right at, it was 8.8 million dollars, I believe, was the exact dollar amount, so right at 9 million.
And we have not yet received S R two?
Both S R two and S R three are what you could call, are caught in a legislative web of mystery. There has been no guidance from the state on when or how those funds will be released, but we know that there is a substantial dollar amount available through both S R two and S R three.
I think you, you suggested S R two might provide as much as 32 million.
That is the initial estimate that we have received, that that's what it's worth to Fort Bend I S D.
So that would more than make up the anticipated shortfall?
If the state allotts it without supplanting, yes, sir, you are correct.
Okay. And then we still have S R three, hopefully there's some money in there that's going to come to us as well. Okay. So we're going to approve the budget in May and the tax rate in September.
Yes, sir, that is correct. The only minor adjustment that I would make to that is if the legislature acts to change the definition of disaster, in order to meet all the timelines for adopting a V A T R E, the board would need to vote on the tax rate in August. But again, there's been no action taken directly on those bills, so we're moving forward with the planning purposes for a V A T R E or disaster pennies, whichever one we would necessarily need to use. But again, I do want to emphasize, both of those options are options of last resort.
Right. But we've got to be queued up and ready to go and have it in our hip pocket just in case. Okay, that's good planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mrs. Hannah?
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Mr. Gwynne, I heard, I think that's promising, we're going to all cross our fingers with S R two and three coming our way, but you mentioned something about some of the funding that is coming to the county and that, that, that perhaps the board needs to take action, or that's something that the board needs to work with you and Dr. Dupree to, to, to get those funds, or did I misunderstand that? You mentioned something about the county getting funding to cover contact tracing and wellness monitors, those kinds of things.
Yes, ma'am, and so that funding is, the county has yet to vote on how to allocate that funding, and my understanding from talking with the auditor, the, the county auditor, is that it goes a long way when the county, county commissioners court hears from locally-elected officials about how funding may impact them. So it would be in our interest for board members to perhaps lobby some of the commissioners to encourage them to fund not only ongoing expenditures that are going to occur, but also past expenditures that were eligible and expended by the school district, that they're receiving funding for that, it's eligible, we've submitted it. It would be nice to direct our funding to the classroom and not towards some of those non-core business areas that we've had to direct them.
Okay. So maybe you, you could give Ms. Heliger.
Yeah, Mr. Gwynne, I think we need a plan on that, and you, you need to provide us some information so that we can do that, and we, I know this board will be willing to lobby our commissioners on getting those, those funds.
Yes, ma'am, we do have some talking points to develop that we can provide.
Brian actually sent that to me just before the meeting, but we wanted to get through the discussion tonight, then I'm, so the board was aware of the need for that level of advocacy, and we've got those details that I'll share with you later tonight or early tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And then I just had, I, I had another question. Well, first, I'm, I'm so glad to see teacher compensation is staying, that, that, that was not removed, but I do want to also ask about lunch, just, and, and I know 50 cents added might not be much to some families, but to some families even, you know, they're, maybe they qualify for free and reduced lunch, but they, they have just not stepped out to do that. But is there, is there, is there any way to use any of the S R funds to, to fund the deficit that we've incurred this year with, with our, our child nutrition?
So what I would, how I would respond to that is, other than the initial 1.4 million dollars from T D A that we've seen, there has not been any specific guidance on being able to utilize those funds for child nutrition or to offset deficits there. That fund, they look at it on an ongoing basis, and again, there is a tool that's released each year by the U S Department of Agriculture that determines how we manage those, those costs. And so again, what we are sharing right now is a preliminary number, it's not guaranteed that it would be that, but we do anticipate some need for adjustment unless U S D A indicates otherwise. And I guess the short answer to your question, I, I talked a long way around it, there's nothing that we've seen in the guidance for how those funds could be utilized that we could offset the child nutrition deficit. So unfortunately, what we're seeing, no, unless something is done by U S D A or T D A at this point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Ms. James?
Thank you, Ms. Heliger, and thank you, staff, for a nice presentation and a lot of information. Some of it, especially at the beginning, went by me a little bit quickly, and I was struggling to focus on all the things that were happening and, and learn at the same time. I had a new level of empathy for some of our students who are trying to learn in distracting environments, because I was struggling a little bit, so I'll just start there. I want to pick up on, a couple of my colleagues were asking about the, I want to start on the strategic investment list. Some of you were talking, or they were asking about the virtual learning school, and I think Mr. Rice asked about it, and I guess what, the, the clarifying question that I'm wondering is, when we say we're looking at 3.9 million, how many students is that planning for? Is that an unlimited number of students? Is that 100 students? Is that 1,000 students? What's the scale, what's the order of magnitude?
So I'll start out with, and Deanna, so in short, what that includes is, it includes a principal to operate the entire school for all grade levels, an assistant principal for each of the major grade levels, so high school, middle school, elementary, and then the associated counselors associated with that. So that's the framework that we are planning for. The idea behind teachers is they would follow the students. So in other words, if we had 22 students enroll in first grade, we're going to have some slack in the system, where we would move a first-grade teacher to oversee the virtual school, but I'll let Deanna add more to that if there is.
Well, that really is the staffing. I'm going to reiterate what I shared with Doc, with Mr. Rice. I don't have a specific target number for enrollment. At this point, we don't have clear indication of how many parents would actually be, would qualify, and we're using speci, an exceptions-based, it's very specific to health challenges that the CDC has outlined, so we're, we're not anticipating a huge or large number, and we'll staff it as Mr. Gwynne indicated, you know, when we, when our, our numbers in any given grade level, we'll remove numbers from the existing enrollment in, in the face-to-face environment. So we should have a much better picture, I would say, within the next two weeks, when we start getting the requests for students and parents in terms of entertaining the, the exceptions enrollment.
Okay, I was just trying to get, it seemed if you've, if you've estimated it's going to cost $4 million, then you would be building your infrastructure to house or to manage a certain number of students, and so that's, I was trying to understand what that, what those parameters were. So it sounds like you're still working that out. So I guess that would be a question I'd like to know a little bit more about as we're going through this. The next thing I'd say, a question about that is, and just to clarify, what type of funding, or is this unknown, would we receive for these students in the virtual, who would attend this virtual learning school?
And yes, ma'am, that is still unknown. There are, as Ms. Sayavedra indicated, there are two bills under consideration in the legislature that would fund the students as we're currently working, so what I would say is if they pass as they are written, that it looks like the model that we're currently operating would be fully funded with the asynchronous and asynchronous and synchronous components. But again, as we've all seen with legislation in the past, they can make last-minute changes, and that changes how that ultimate legislation is enacted. But at this point, the way that it looks, we would receive funding for those students who are opt for a virtual learning environment.
Okay, I, I didn't catch those bill numbers, so if we could get that in our next information with the answers to the questions later, written down, that would help me.
Yes, it's Senate Bill 27 and House Bill 1468, but we can certainly. can certainly provide you all some summaries about the content in those bills.
Yeah, and just if we have the numbers written down, then it's easy to track them. And you said them again, and I still didn't write it down, so. Write in and write out. Okay, so then, the next strategic priority I want to talk about is, I know we talked about the A B block scheduling, but I'm really struggling on the funding part of side of this, and you may have rattled this off, but again, I was slightly distracted. Do, do we have, you've got some bullet points on this, on the slide of kind of five things. You started off, I think, trying to give a breakdown of the cost of the eight point two million we have allocated. Is it broken down into parts? And how would, do we have information around that, or could I receive that later this week, or are you prepared to, I'll try to pay attention and write it down?
So, yes, ma'am, this, and please do, Mrs. Skril, don't make me be a teacher. I've never been one before, and I don't know if I will. I would be a good principal, but I don't know about a teacher. But related to that, so the eight point three million dollars funds thirty positions for the A B block pilot and seventy position, teaching positions for the five of seven at the other campuses.
Okay, that's the hundred teachers, and I got that, I picked up on that when Mr. Rosenthal asked about it. Okay, that's it.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, so the out, the elementary outclass model that we've talked about, the increased P L C time, that's already included in the base budget?
Yes, ma'am, if you recall, for the current school year, the the elementary outclass was incorporated into the two thousand and twenty twenty-one budget, and so the campuses currently have those resources available, they will be carrying forward into next year to support the elementary level. This is really, the funding that we're looking at is for the secondary level to implement.
Okay, so my follow-up question on that is then, so we're going to do this pilot, and we're, it sounds as if, if I've understood all the pieces correctly, we're using a one-time funding source, the disaster pennies, to fund it, and I'm wondering what our plan is for the subsequent years, or how we are, well, what's our plan for the, you know, year two, year three, et cetera? That's, that's, that's part A of the question, and, well, let's start there, let's start with part A, because I'm, I'll be focused.
So what, there are two components to that, that I would say, is, is going back to, we are setting the stage for incoming leadership to make a determination of the best paths forward. And so if we were to determine that the A B pilot is going to be something we want to continue, then we would need to look at an ongoing funding source for that, which could come from the V A T R E. The other side to that, that I would mention, is that the funding associated from the federal government that we've talked through is good through twenty twenty-three, so it's not just a one-shot deal, it's actually good for multiple school years. And so if we were to choose to continue that for an additional year, there's the potential that we could have it funded that way. Again, this is all determined by the state legislature and how they enact or choose to move forward with that funding. But our two options would be looking at this and determining, yes, this is something we want to continue funding, and identifying the ongoing funding source, again, V A T R E could be potential, or going the route of utilizing the federal funding until it lapses, and then moving back to a regular block schedule at those campuses.
A regular seven-period schedule is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so we're, we're conceptually thinking about this in the category of it's an intervention, but this is what's confounding me or confusing me. We're thinking about it in one hand as an intervention, as a pandemic response, and then we're thinking on the other hand, that it's necessary for our early college high school model, and as we implement, so we're going to implement year three for this upcoming school year, and year four the following year, and in order for kids to get enough credits to meet the goals of that program, we need to have, we really need the eight-period day for them. And so is 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 that what you're, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is that ideally, that would, and as we go through this cohort as juniors and seniors, we can look at what stress points become, present themselves in their schedules. Obviously, an eight-period day allows them the 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 freedom and the opportunities to meet all of the requirements. So as we look at funding sources in the future, and we make determinations with whatever new, you know, in transit, with transition in leadership, we may have to go back and look at schedules that support our ongoing early college high school programming that may look, you know, so we'll have to have some deep discussions about what that funding will look like and what we will fund so that we continue to move forward with 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 that programming. But for right now, we know that the eight-period day allows them all of the opportunities that they need with less stress on their schedules to meet all of the requirements for the associate's degree.
Okay, and and that's good, and I want them to not, I want the students to have less stress, and I want them to be able to participate in their sport, or play in the band, or try ag classes, or all of those other enrichment things that are important, arts, whatever it might be, theater. So I I think that's a good plan. I guess my request, Dr. Dupree, is, is it possible for next month for us to look at a three-year plan or something like that, so that we can just sort of see where all of these plans would take us? I recognize you've mentioned about, you know, changing leadership and change, potential changing plans, but we're talking about investing this type of money at this point, that's a significant amount of money, and I I feel like understanding what this mean, what the future might bring is an important piece.
Absolutely, you know, it's become our tradition during the month, during the public hearing and all, to do that three-year outlook, and so we'll absolutely be prepared for that next month.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. And then the other question I had, somebody, let me get onto slide nine. You asked, or you talked about, I think, Ms. Ayaveira, updating the health and safety protocols, and that you're, and your staff is in the middle of doing that, and I guess my ask about that is that the board be updated about that, because, and and that we have that, an update here in the boardroom, so that the entire community can hear about it and we can discuss it, because there there is quite a lot of chatter out there about the plans, I'm sure you guys are getting it in your email inboxes, I'm getting it via the phone, via the email, and and all, and I think it's important conversation for the board to have, or have an understanding and be able to ask questions that we're hearing, so we have a clear path forward. Okay, I asked about that, and I think I understand the cost breakdown. And then my last question then is, Mr. Gwen, you were talking about a three, proposing, proposed three cent tax increase that we're talking about tonight, and considering that is the maximum for what the board would actually approve in August or September, as I understand it. What is the revenue to the district for each, what's the estimated revenue for each penny of tax, of tax assessed?
So we've estimated that each penny generates roughly five to five point two million dollars in additional revenue to the district.
Okay, and so that's where the fifteen point, whatever it was, fifteen point three or whatever it was, comes from, and that seems adequate to cover the strategic priorities that you guys have have added. Is that my, correct? And that?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, and that counts on no funding for the students that are in the virtual learning, that would choose the virtual learning environment, or does it count on funding for those students?
So at this point, it assumes that we would receive the normal A D A funding for those students, because we have based it on our PASA projection of moderate growth. And so, again, as Ms. Ayaveira mentioned, we don't have an exact headcount on those. Once we've received that, we can do sensitivity analysis of what would happen if we were to back those students out, receive half funding, A D A funding, et cetera. But at this point, without any clear guidance, we're using, assuming full funding.
Okay, and, okay, and so I don't know that, that, I have no idea the status of these bills, but you can bet I'm going to be looking them up as soon as I get the numbers in my head. And I guess my concern is, is that that doesn't, we're waiting on legislation to have that, to receive funding for those, that's not necessarily our worst-case scenario. Our worst-case scenario would be that we do not receive funding for those students, and then we would be, I guess, severely limiting, or we would potentially severely limit the number of students who could participate. I'm just trying to work through, I'm thinking out loud a little bit here, because I'm, it's very, the legislature is somewhat unpredictable, and I also need to be able to have appropriate conversations with our local representatives and senators, so that I can give them good information about what what we're planning. And the first thing they're going to ask me is, how many students do you think this is going to serve? And I'm going to say, well, I've got four million dollars, and I don't know how many students, and so that's going to be a difficult conversation, a difficult sell. So that's not a question, but perhaps you would like to make a comment, you don't have to make a comment.
I'd like to, I'd like to speak to that real quickly, though, because I, I do, I mean, the the greatest challenge over the last year is identifying how many students, because we still have roughly fifty percent of our kids learning online. So, you know, and we are going to substantially narrow that to kids who are qualified based on eligibility, and we don't have a way to quantify that. We will within thirty days. That'll help, but the other piece that I wanted to mention, Mr. James, is that, you know, Brian's talking about the legislation that's on the table, but the fact is, the commissioner for the last eighteen months has funded schools through his rulemaking capacity to do online. And so I think that's still a third option that could happen, even if nothing, you see, a lot of the bills and legislation are focused on kind of permanent, long-term launching of virtual schools. But if they can't get that done, the commissioner has publicly declared on numerous occasions, he knows, they know, that they expect to still have some online learning this fall. So that, I think that's going to be most likely the fallback, even if none of the permanent legislation makes it through, we we still would likely have that that availability. And I understand that doesn't, still didn't address your concern of a need to have a number, and I appreciate that, but it's just one of those things, there's just not even a way, anything we pull is just going to be pulling something out of the air at this point.
Right, but perhaps we could base the, perhaps we could make an estimate to help us with the conversation, because perhaps we could make an estimate based on known health conditions of some of our student population, or we could, or whatever the other indicators are that the C D C is going to discourage those students from being in a face-to-face environment. I think, you know, I, we have a large population, so we're going to have kids who have cancer, we're going to have kids who have heart conditions, we're going to have, you know, the whole range of things, and potentially, we can project a population, it's just going to be a guess, I recognize it, but I think it would be helpful in the conversation to say, based on our population, two percent of our students are still going to need an online environment, because it's not safe for them due to, you know, the COVID nineteen pandemic, for them to be in, be in school. And I think it also is relevant as we look at, you know, the the other shifting thing is, what is, what vaccine, what vaccines are available and for what age groups? It looks like there's vaccine available for high school students now, so maybe that eliminates our need for for doing virtual high school, although we, you know, I know it's, some of the kids have really thrived at it, and that's a whole nother conversation, right? We're talking about a medical need or a health need, health and safety need, but but maybe if we're talking, you know, a a different age group and the non-eligible students. I'm just thinking it through a little bit to try to have some talking points, because I know the questions that I'm going to be asked if I try to talk to our representatives about these bills.
I would, and I, and I want to, I want to be mindful, because you're raising some good points, but I I would like to raise the conversation, I guess, to the level that if you recall, the board actually, months ago, adopted legislative agenda around this very issue. So we do have good talking points that extend beyond COVID. So I think maybe part of the thing that we're talking about tonight is, this is not an ask that's specifically related to COVID. This is about meeting the needs of any student who might like another learning opportunity in a virtual environment, and so I think we can use COVID as the launchpad, and certainly we'll follow up with the, some projections and things for you, but I just think maybe expanding the talking points to, we need a virtual environment for our kiddos anyway, especially at the secondary level, who need options, who need choices outside of the bricks and mortar school day. And we've learned a lot that it's going to enable us to launch that successfully, very much more quickly than anticipated, but we, no matter what, we need legislation to enable us to permanently, long-term, fund virtual learning, and that was our our board's desire months and months ago, even before we got to the virtual school in response to COVID. So I think we'll, I'll ask staff to put together more comprehensive talking point lists that you can, the board can use in their advocacy.
Well, thank you, Dr. Dupree, I think you're absolutely right, because the board has talked about this before, we have talked about how some students can be successful in this environment, and and this was, you know, pre-pandemic, I completely agree. So maybe there's two lists of talking points. There's the short term, you know, you're talking about exception-based virtual learning, it it seems like you're going to have some criteria for that, and so there's talking points around that. And yes, there's, there's, you know, what's, what's the next logical step in terms of choice and opportunity for students to provide a virtual environment and allow that be, to be, you know, a regular school option or choice? And I'm all for that, and I think that that, we're in a great place to continue and to develop that. For those students who would thrive in that environment, that does not suit every student. Some students need a face-to-face environment, they need to be around their peers, many students, all of us need to be around our peers, many need to be have hands-on tactile learning where they're manipulating manipulatives and that, you know, all of those things that we know to be true. So it sounds like it's a two-phase, two-step process, and I do believe there are other districts who have approved virtual schools, and I don't know if that approval comes through the T E A or how they've done that, but I believe Grapevine-Collville I S D has a virtual school that they operate, and they get funding for it, and they have all sorts of kids who who participate in that, and I imagine from quite a region, so. Thank you for letting me expound on that topic, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Ms. James, Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, thank you, actually, can can y'all hear me a little better? I'm trying to scream into my microphone. Good, okay. I actually agree with with everything Ms. James has said, and in fact, last meeting, when we started talking about the the virtual school, and we actually put a number to it, I was under the impression that this was not just exception-based. So I'm glad this has been clarified, and I agree that, you know, because I think one of the points I made during that meeting was that there are kids that thrive, just like Ms. James said, and I think that's a good alternative. I do think we we somehow, if if we can get some kind of projections before we vote on this, I think it'd be very helpful, because it's, I think it's just, it's just tough to do without, without some kind of concept of how big this thing is. And also, if you could maybe during the week, provide us with with maybe some examples of of some of the criteria, or the exception criteria or qualifications, that would be helpful. And along the point of of a three-year plan, I agree that there, we need to have some numbers, because if the pilot block scheduling is successful for these three campuses, and you've got ten additional teachers at each campus, two of those campuses are underutilized, you're going to need at least ninety to a hundred teachers district-wide just to implement that, and that costs a lot of money. So we need to make sure that we're going to be prepared in the future to find that money somehow, and that usually means asking for it. So that's, it's something to keep in mind, so I think that's all I have for now, keep it short and sweet, thank you.
All right, thank you, those were good questions. I do want to ask a question about cybersecurity, that is a concern of mine as well. Ms. James, you asked a lot of my questions already this evening, so, but I just wanted to follow up with cybersecurity, security. It looks like, if if I'm reading correctly, we have no dollars in the budget for cybersecurity, and we are rating it on the audit to determine the amount of, you know, what kind of And we are waiting on the audit to determine the amount of, you know, what kind of remediation we're going to have to do. So when looking at cybersecurity, we shouldn't just be talking about remediation. We should also be talking about prevent prevention. And so I'm concerned about what's in the budget to prevent, you know, any kind of bad actors from attacking our 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 servers in our environment.
Well, and one of the things I'll point to before I turn it over to Mr. Pham is that we did include funds in the current school year budget specifically for cybersecurity that was mandated by the last legislative session. And so there was roughly $200,000 incorporated there. But I'll let Mr. Pham speak specifically to some of the measures we have in place now.
Most of which we have already place have in place in terms of defensive mechanism and and posture. What we need is a list of, I guess, tools that we can help us detect them earlier and also some preventive software. So that way we can additionally prevent kids from actually clicking on things as well as training. So we 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 would like to wait until the audit to see exactly where the prioritization that Gibson may have. So that way we can reprioritize it as appropriately. Right now, I feel like we have a very good defensive posture in terms of defending our network and all of our technology against bad actors.
So there is money in the budget. It just wasn't highlighted inside of the presentation. Okay, because it that concerned me when it says 0.0 of dollars for cybersecurity.
I would rather not go into the details because, like I say, I don't want to express what we have and don't have publicly.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I have a question, please.
One second, Ms. Williams. So I just want to make sure that some of the questions that the team has expressed around plans and whatnot, I know we're going to have a lot of that in our minutes. But I do want to make sure, I want to emphasize something that Ms. James said is that we put this as part of our overall plan. We we just recently had our, it wasn't a team, but it was our our board self-evaluation. And that was one of the questions that came up was to ensure that we are being accountable to the work that we said that we're going to do. And I think it's important for us moving forward. I mean, just the way we set up our agenda around our goals and objectives is to ensure that some of these follow-up items get placed back into into the overall agenda. And we can see kind of, you know, where they came from and, you know, why they're there. All right, Ms. Williams?
Okay, my question is for Mr. Nguyen. Mr. Nguyen, I am happy to see you included the federal funding as part of the budget today. However, I'm somewhat confused. When we do the budget without the federal funding, we received the federal funding, you stated May, early June. How are we reconciling the budget to include the federal funding once it's received?
So the budget that we establish for the general operating fund includes all of the funds necessary for the the teachers and the staff on an ongoing basis at each campus. On top of that, you will have the title funds, Perkins Funds, et cetera, that provide, in most cases, supplemental funding to offer additional teachers, staff, et cetera, that can support those campuses. In most cases, it's like, I would say it for Title I, the instructional interventionists and instructional coaches that assist at those campuses. And so the budget that we build specific to instructing students doesn't require those specific resources. Because those specific resources, again, are supplemental to the general funds that each campus receives.
Okay, so if I'm understanding the E-grant that I have before me, it allows for teachers to be paid, data entry cards, as long as they're working at a Title I school. So you're saying that the money that these campuses are getting, the additional $600, we should be seeing extra personnel, additional personnel?
Yes, ma'am, that would be personnel above and beyond what's included in the general fund. Or and and again, to address just the supplemental funding that you mentioned, that would be additional work time for those teachers on those campuses to support the students at those individual campuses.
No, you said additional work time. Are we hiring new employees with the money or you paying them subsidies or bonuses?
Yes, ma'am, via supplemental pay. Yes, ma'am.
So you're not actually hiring additional personnel? Because I'm looking at three sets of documents before me. The consolidated ESSA application. I'm looking at a campus budget and I'm looking at your budget that you prepared. So if I'm hearing you correctly, the $600 that's currently been allocated on the average per campus, I'm not going to see additional personnel. I'm paying staff that's already employed by the district, correct?
No, ma'am, I'll interject there. That is not correct. So what you're seeing, the the budget we've talked through tonight is a general operating fund, a maintenance and operations budget. So that is Mr., as Brian mentioned, that includes all the general education staffing for the organization and and most and most all the special education and that kind of staffing. Within and then the other documents you're looking at that refers to perhaps the ESSA Title I budget, that anything reckon in that budget is additional staffing that's funded using those funds specifically. Those individuals are not paid through the general fund. They are paid through that title fund. And it and so they are, we do hire additional supplemental staff using that ESSA Title I funding.
Got it. That's what I was trying to understand, Dr. Dupree. So there are extra people?
Yes, ma'am.
On the campus?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. One other item that we need to make sure that is in our budget is for the Early Literacy Center expansion. So when you're looking at that three-year plan, how, what's the impact of our expansion of the of the ELC?
And Ms. Heligor, are you referring specifically to the ELC II at Hunter's Glen?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, we are accounting for, so and I'll let Deanna correct me if I misspeak here. But that includes all of the incoming pre-K students from the Will, or I'm sorry, from the Marshall feeder pattern would attend the Hunter's Glen Early Literacy Center. Also, we would allow for the 24 to 2 for all of the existing students that are at Hunter's Glen. So it wouldn't include from the other feet or other elementary campuses in that feeder pattern. And then again, with first grade, we would be at 22 to 1. With the idea that each year we are stepping up the enrollment in those, the student enrollment throughout the feeder pattern.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, thank you, board members and staff for providing a good conversation on an update of our strategic plan and our budget. I think it was very informative to us and to the community. And I'm sure that as we go home and start and still mellow over some of the presentation, there might be some further questions that the team might provide you. We'll provide that to you based on a memo or email. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hannah, did you have another question? Did I miss you?
I'll send it in an email.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I saw your finger down, okay. All right, at this time, we do not have any, before we go to closed session, we do not have any public speaker. So what I would like to do is move our action items up prior to going to closed session. So that's going to be items eight, A1, two, and three. So at this time, I would like to take a motion for item 8A1.
Madam President, I move to approve item 8A1 as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. It is to consider approval of setting the date, time, and place to conduct the public budget hearing for the proposed 2021-22 school district budget and tax rates on May 10, 2021. Just to reiterate Mr. Nguyen's comments, this is not actually setting the date, I mean, the actual tax rate. This is, this is actually to set the date and time of our public hearing to discuss the maximum tax rate that was proposed at the three, the three cents, which is the 1.227.
Yes, ma'am. So what I would say is that this specific item is setting the date and time of the public hearing. The next two action items that you have for the INS rate and the O and M rate will do exactly what you just said. They set the maximum threshold for which you can discuss without having to go back out for republication. So yes, ma'am, you are correct.
Okay, very good. I'm I'm put them all together. All right, okay, so at this time, I will take, any other questions on this first motion? All right, very good. Our machines are not working. We're still trying to get with the technology. It's O box, okay, with the technology there. So I'm going to ask that board members, you would vote by raising your hands tonight, okay? All in favor? All right, motion passes unanimously. Can I have a motion for item 8A2 to consider the approval of the proposed 2021 maintenance and operations tax rate?
Madam President, I move to move to recommend approval of action item 8A2 as presented.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. At this time, I think any questions around this particular action? All in favor, please show by raising your hand. All right, this this motion passes unanimously. And then our final action item for this evening is item 8A3 is to consider approval of the proposed 2021 debt service tax rate.
Madam President, I move to approve action item 8A3 as presented.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. At this time, I would take any questions on the motion that's on the floor. All right, I ask for you all to take a vote. All in all in favor, please show by the raise raising of your hands. All right, thank you. That motion passes unanimously. At this time, we will now go into closed session, convene a closed session under the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, under the following sections. Section 551071, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. Section 551072, consider purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Section 551074, personnel matters. Section 551076, security matters. Section 551082, student discipline matter or complaint, or section 5510821. Personally identifiable information about public school students. Time now is 8 o'clock and we are now convening closed session.
We don't have any actions from closed session at this time. So I will start our review of agenda and move through that pretty quickly. We have pulled item 6A2 from the agenda. I'll move to 6A3, oh I'm sorry, let me go back. 6A1, review revisions to local board policies. We have CPC local, office management, records management. B, FNG local, student rights and responsibilities, student and parent complaints and grievance. C, GF local, public complaints. D, GKA local, community relations conduct on school premises. At this time, I'll take any questions for any items off of 6A1. I'm going to actually ask our policy chair if you would like to highlight any changes to those policies.
Okay, yes, Madam President. Well, the only one that went through the policy committee is CPC local and it was basically to designate the custodian of records. That was the main point of that with some language around that and making sure that our records are secure and making sure that it addressed or referenced the electronic records as well as paper records. And the other ones are, did not go through the policy committee, so I think they're just minor changes.
All right, I believe those are minor changes to just make compliance to any of our legal changes, right? All right, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Williams.
Okay, trustee James stated that they were minor changes. If you look at FNG and GF local, the FNG is a complaint process that most parents use when they are having problems with the district. What trustee, what the administration is trying to do is minimize the amount of days that a parent has to file the particular complaint. What they want to go to is calendar days instead of business days.
Excuse me.
And if you can't file a complaint on the weekend, why are we including those days? We need to stick to the business days, the days the district is open and operating.
All right, do we have it to show up on the screen by any chance? Does everyone, all the board members have it? Okay, so you have, everyone has it, good. All right, so can you, I think it's on page 63 in our books. I'm sorry, that's public complaints and we're talking about, is it what?
It's public, it's public complaint as well. It's GF and FNG.
Okay, let's do the FNG first because it comes first in our book, which is on page 47, I believe. Is that right?
Why didn't pull it out?
Okay, it's page 49 under days, it says days shall mean district business days. Is that what you're referring to, Ms. Williams?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it says days shall mean district days. So that piece is not changing.
Ms. Heiliger, if I could speak to that. So in the previous page, there's a paragraph that does refer to 90 calendar days. If you look under where there's the enumeration of 14 and then the next paragraph talks about an appeal from someone who's been ejected from a campus. So the 90 day, 90 calendar days is intended to give a grievance someone who is filing an appeal, a faster route to the board rather than 90 business days or any business days because when the district is closed or on weekends, those days are not counted. And so what this revision is attempting to do is conform with the statute that the education code 37-105 requires that short timeframe, faster schedule.
So the, so the legal, legal says that we have to do it in a shorter timeframe in order to get to the board.
That's correct.
Ms. Williams.
Are you saying, are you saying that that's what the state statute is stating?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Williams. It's, it's a, the calendar day is going to be a shorter timeframe than business days because when the district is closed on weekends or for holidays, those days don't count. Those days do not count and so it could conceivably be longer before a complaint or a grievance would get to the board's attention.
Understood, okay. Okay, I understand that. So you're changing this policy to comply with the statute.
Yes, ma'am, clarifying.
Was it mandated for you to change this?
Well, the statute requires that complaint to Well, the statute requires that complaint to get to the board within 90 days. What we're doing is conforming our local policy so that there's consistency and alliance between the legal, the statute and the local policy.
So Ms. Williams, the policy committee or legal, our legal team, review certain policies every so often to make sure that they're in compliance with the state. And if there are recommendations that are needed for change to just make them compliant, they will make them and present it to us. This is, it's ongoing. You'll see that we'll have, you know, different policies will come up based on what they're reviewing. So this is something, this is a normal practice that the district does to make sure that we're legally compliant with our local policies.
And it's the same change in FNG local and GF local because someone who's a member of the community could, in the same, be in the same situation and have been expelled from a campus and they would have the same right of sort of an accelerated appeal to the board.
So I think what we need to do just as a hallmark maybe is just, it says the GKA, which is the legal that's, that is associated with this one. Is that, is that what you're saying? In this document, in the local document, GKA legal? Yeah, so let's, you know, at your convenience, if you all could just review the GKA legal and if you have any further questions, we can present it to, to the team, the legal team.
Okay, I didn't get to finish what I was trying to say, Addie.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
What I was trying to explain too, I don't know who's talking at this point, but FNG local, shortening FNG local is not going to be beneficial to the community. I have parents all the time coming to me, Addie, and those weekdays are days that they're not even focusing on filing complaints. So they're accustomed to having 10 business days to file those complaints. To have the weekends count against them is not right. And if you see the reasoning that they're changing the policy, it has nothing to do with state statute. It has everything to do with the administration's will. This is not a state mandate change.
So...
Even, even legal stated that in the memo.
So I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly, Ms. Williams. We're talking about page 48 or page two of eight of FNG local underneath the complaints refusal of entry or ejection from district property based on Education Code 37-105. Is that, is that the section that you're referring to? Because I'm trying to find out what the section that says 10 days. If you could, if you could point me to that?
That's the law. I'm sorry?
Can you point me to that, please? Where you, where you are?
Ms. Halliger, she's, the general provision under filing, timeliness is, a complaint has to be brought within 10 days of an event. And that's what I think she's referring to, that that's the, that's the timeframe. But that, there is no change in policy with respect to that. We're not proposing any change to that.
Okay, but that's, maybe that's why I was confused because I didn't, I didn't understand.
Right, so we're using 10, we're still using 10 business days for the FNG?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, and how about for GK?
The same.
The same. So the only thing that's going through the policy changes for the 90 calendar days is which policy?
It's, it's this policy, but it's in that narrow category of complaint relating to a refusal of entry or an ejection from a property. It's not applicable to all nature of complaints that can be brought, only that narrow category.
Oh, it's only GKA is the only thing that's going to require the calendar date?
No, Ms. Williams, let me, I think, because you, you, you share the objective that the staff is trying to convey with this change. The 10 days in all of these policies remains the same as we've talked about. This change that we're seeking actually benefits the constituent, it benefits the stakeholder because it has to do only with someone who was refused entry or who was ejected from a district property. So if they feel that was not fair or right, we're actually shortening the amount of time they have to, to get to the board to expeditiously get them to the board. 90 business days extends the amount of time that it can be extended before they would get the board's attention to address this concern. 90, 90 calendar days makes it a faster route to the board on this specific type of issue. So really, it achieves the same goal you're, you're trying to do is, is a timely hearing in front of the board.
But not to be confused with the 10 days. I want to make sure that's real clear. It's not, the 10, the 10 days still remains, Ms. Williams, as, as the overarching, I guess, policy around complaints?
But the definition of days, every other consideration of days are business days. It's only this one.
Right.
Right, okay, I get it. So what's down here at the bottom of page 48, beginning with the words complaints regarding refusal of entry, that's the only policy that we're shortening by using calendar date?
That's correct.
Got it, so it's just under the FNG local?
Right, and then, but I think there's also in two other places, FNG local as well as GF local and GKA local.
Right.
It's the same, yeah.
GKA is the policy that sets forth that someone can be ejected from campus.
Mrs. Halliger?
So it's on page, so GKA local is page 75 in your book. It's, it's right in the middle of your section. And then, I'm trying to find the other one real quick.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm following you now. I was just concerned that we were changing all the days to reflect calendar.
No.
But if it's just that particular property code, then I understand what Charles is saying. It is going to shorten the time that someone can go before the board. So I'm clear. I just didn't want anything to happen to the FNG or the GK.
Right, yeah, that overarching does not change.
Got it. Okay, I'm clear.
Mrs. Halliger, if we may ask Mrs. Williams to drop one of her devices because she's causing an echo on the Zoom.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Hannah?
I had asked earlier prior to the meeting, Ms. Williams, that, that there might be some clarity added to the day section in FNG and I believe the next one, the policy, just so everyone is clear that, that that 90-day calendar day is clarified over under days and just pointed back to that. So I shared that today, but, but I think there, there might be other people a little bit confused, so...
Ms. Hannah, if I may speak to that.
Yes.
The reason the draft is the way you see it is because the enumeration of 1 through 14 are exceptions to this policy.
To the, okay.
Exceptions. Anything that's within the subject matter of 1 through 14 is not heard through FNG, okay?
Okay.
But this paragraph following 14, although it's got a different timeframe, a different day calculation, it is, as the policy says and the statute says, shall be filed in accordance with this policy. So this is not an exception, it's not carved out.
Okay.
But it's just a different time calculation.
Okay. Well, I must confess to reading it and having a bit of confusion when I got over today's versus that, so...
It's a little bit of an odd duck, but...
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, item 6A2, review board's commitment to particip, oh no, sorry, I was pulling that. 6A3, review revised expenditures authorization and ratifications of expenditures incurred during the February 2021 winter storm. Does anyone have any questions?
Dr. Dupree, I don't think we have any information about this item.
That's correct, that's what the item says. It'll be provided for the regular meeting next week. We just put it in here as a placeholder to kind of set the, the stage for next week.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and if we need to pull it from the consent agenda we can to have a separate discussion. All right, 6A4, review previous minute meetings from March 3rd, March 8th, March 22nd, March 24th, March 29th, and March 31st. Anyone have any questions? All right, 6, 6B1, review waiver for 40% campus hybrid instruction for ninth through 12th grade students during district scheduled testing days. All right, 6C, scalable systems. One, review 2021-22 Fort Bend ISD designated hazardous traffic conditions list and review adoption of the designated hazardous traffic conditions resolution. 6C2, review revised project budget for the replacement of the pool filtration system at the Don Cook Naterium and review utilization of BOM 2018 program contingency funds. 6C3, review revised project budget for the water heaters boiler package. Review professional services agreement with Infrastructure Associates Incorporated and review utilization of 2018 BOM program contingency funds. I, I do have a question. Am I asking a question? Is this, is this the new boilers that we put into our schools?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. This is the, the repairs associated with the investigation that we did. And so the additional money is to go ahead and repair them.
All right, 6C4, review construction services agreement with Dramala Construction Company for the construction of new elementary school 53. Does anyone have any questions on that? Just take, you know, I don't know if some of our, our board members may have had an opportunity to take a look at that, but if you could, just take a look at that to get yourself familiarized with, you know, the process. They have a matrix of how things were scored and whatnot. So I just ask that you, you know, make sure you all do that, yeah. Because I know it was something for me to kind of learn and understand and you all may have some questions. I do want to just kind of remind, remind the board that we go through it tonight just to ask if you all have any initial questions. If you do have any more throughout the week, of course, we utilize Dr. Dupree and we can still ask questions during the board meeting, okay? I just want to make sure that was clear. All right, 6, 6C5, review purchase exceeding $50,000 specifically for, A, review purchase of milk and juice for the child nutrition department from Oak Farm Dairy. Review the purchase of clinic supplies, equipment and related items. Review purchase of turnitin, software products and services. Oh, Grail?
Thank you, Ms. Halliger. My question on this one was, I read to it, it looked like we were expanding this to more subjects, which seemed to me to mean more licenses or more need, so I'm, but it looked like the price amount we were planning to spend was about the same. So I'm wondering if those things are mutually exclusive or compatible.
Well, we primarily use it, in the past, we've used it for English and providing writing feedback. I'm going to ask Melissa Hubbard to add any additional information about the expansion to some of the other content areas.
So it has, as Deanna was just saying, it's been typically used in our ELA classrooms and that's where it's been promoted. We've always had access to the other pieces, but with the shift to online learning, it opened up the door for us to be able to use it in multiple, multiple content areas. But we haven't seen a lot of usage yet in the other content areas. So it's not really a change in the licensing that we've had before. It's just now in the online environment, we've kind of opened the door to being able to use it in other content areas.
So it's a fixed cost, doesn't, it's, it's not relevant to the number of users or the amount of stuff that goes, student work that goes through turnitin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item 6C5D, review purchase of feedback and customer service solution with K-12 insight technology and communication services. Item 6C5E, review purchase of police worn body cameras and related items and services. Item 6C5F, review purchase of moving services. Ms. James?
So is it only those two vendors for the moving services? I know you talked about, in the, somewhere in the information, it was about getting the best price and there's only those two vendors available?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so. And I'm going to defer the question to either Maya Thornton Polk or Brenda Essenberg, our Director of Purchasing, or Purchasing Department to help respond with that.
Yes, so for the moving services, we bonded off the Cooperative Contract of Choice Partners and those were the two vendors that were awarded for the moving services contract.
Ms. Thornton, that sounded very garbled to me. Could you say that again more slowly?
Sure. Let me move my camera up just a little bit. Is this better?
I really like your background.
Me too, by the way.
I wish I had as cool, I have the Texas flag in my background, but I don't have what you've got. Sorry, go ahead.
Can you hear me a little bit better now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we procured these moving services via Choice Partners Cooperative and so those were the two moving services that are awarded by Choice Partners. So it's a rocket as well as a moving and storage as that our moving service contract expanded.
Ms. Thornton, when you, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Thornton, when you move to the right or the left, we can't hear you, you start to become gargled.
Okay, my apologies. Is this a little bit better now?
Yeah, as long as you're still facing to the forward, then we can hear you. When you move your mouth to, to the left or to the right, it becomes difficult to hear you.
Got you, I'm going to try third times the charm, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we purchased these moving services via Choice Partners Cooperative. And so via the Choice Cooperative contract, it was the two vendors that are awarded and those are the two vendors you see here. So your answer is yes, it is with the two vendors.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. So we're going to move on to 6D1, review 2018 BOM program. Review transfer funds within the 2018 BOM budget for information technology projects. Does that include getting the buttons to work around here? Or, I'm just asking. The voting button to work.
Those, those voting boxes are very old and when we did brain surgery in them, we struggled a little bit to get them back to the way they were. But we're, we're, we're almost there.
All right.
Do they have transistors in them? Is that how old they are?
Believe it or not, we had to order the power supply on eBay because they don't make them anymore.
I wonder what it would cost for a new voting system. We can't discuss it because it's not on the agenda.
But there's something for you to look at.
But just think about it.
All right, 6D2, review using the 2018 BOM program contingency as proposed. All right. Yeah, yeah, I mentioned it earlier. Okay, all right, so that's all the questions for this evening. Thank you all for being here so late tonight. I appreciate every one of you all. And at this time, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Madam President.
We are now adjourned at 10:29.